Lie on your back, have a one in your palm roll and tail go to the other. Take our hands up on your chest. Do a couple of big breaths pulling your air into the chest. And on the exhale, feel that chest relax down towards your lower. Deep inhale. Exhaling, let that chest puddle down towards the lower. Four more breaths here into the nose. Blow out to the mouth. Three more. Bring the hands down beside the ribs, letting the elbows drop down towards the floor heavy. On the inhale, pull the air into the sides of the rib cage, like you're trying to push those hands out wider towards the corner. And on the exhale, feel the ribs grow heavy into your roller. Inhaling, press the ribs out to the sides. Exhaling, the ribs relax into your roller. Four more big breaths here. Last big breath. Now let's take a triangle with the hands. Take your triangle now and place it down just below the belly button. On the inhale, pull your air into that triangle position below the belly button. And exhale, feel that space under the belly button relax down into your roller. Deep inhale. Three more. Last time here. Relax those arms out by the sides. Let them fall to your left stretch on the shoulders and opening to the chest. And this time, take an inhale, fill up all the way down to the bottom, all the way up to the shoulders. Big breath, inhale. On the exhale, begin by pressing your out of that triangle area first. Then from the ribs, then through the chest, find a connection with your spine down to the floor. On the inhale, spine grow light, fill up into the body. Exhaling, feel the spine find its connection with the roller, starting from the belly button, all the way up to the top of the shoulders. Two more times. Big inhale. Last time. Let the spine find a position that it feels comfortable in. Take your hands up to the sky with the finger tips and the palm of the hand reach for each other. Deep breath in, try to big push those hips. And on the exhale, pull those hips apart, find length of the front chest. Inhale and draw all those hips together, fight the breath. Exhaling, relax the arms out. Four more. Last three. Last time here. Take a second for this big breath, let the body relax down into the floor, finding a melting sensation into your roller. Gently rock towards one side, just melting from your roller. Take the roller behind your back, light about the broad line. So the broad line where the armpits, when a roller back needs to stay bent, I want you to make sure your hips stay heavy onto the back as we're talking. Take your hands behind the head. And on the inhale, not like those six lifts, start melting the spine over the roller, let the head go heavy. Exhaling, try to press that spine into the roller, lift to the head, up the thighs. Inhaling, break over the roller. Opening up to those elbows. Keeping the elbows wide, exhale as we lift back out. Three more more here. Deep inhale as we melt both elbows. And exhale, lift the head, head up to the thighs. One more time here, inhale as we go back. Exhaling, lift the head. Right, now lift those hips, roll your way back, just a little, not a lot, just a little. And if your spine is tolerated, you can set those hips back in and we'll go again. Now if this becomes too much on your spine, you can go closer to the shoulders to relieve some of that tension. Hands go back behind the head. Keep those hips heavy, not let them be the floor, as you inhale, take the head back. Exhaling, pressing the ribs down to the roller if you pull that head back up. Five more, deep inhale all the way back, spine section. Exhaling, as we rail that back into the front chest, keep those elbows wide. Three more. Last one here. We're making a change. Now you can take those elbows close to each other. Opening up that space on the between the shoulder blades, creating both the spine to the roller. Lift the hips now, hold to the top of the shoulder. And then back to the bottom of the rib cage. Take your time to roll back and forth. Three more. Let's set those hips down. Take your roller to the side for a second. Lie down on your back. Lengthen those legs all the way out and take a second to know if it feels like your ribs lift up a little bit. How is the small of our back doing? Is it pushed down to the mat or is there still quite a bit of gap between the small of your back and the mat? How are those legs looking? Hopefully they can naturally stay in pretty good alignment. If you're concerned, it'll look like mine because it's all out on the sides. Hopefully be corrected if you more of those things do disappear. Bend the knees, take the feet flat. Hold the roller underneath the hips. No head, leave the top of your feet up high, wind up on that roller. And on the exhale, pull those hips in and not hang out there. Couple of breaths. Roll on your rollers so it doesn't fly away from you. Let the legs go into the legs, pull your ribs down into the mat. Now start to pull those hips away, feel like gravity is kind of holding the legs up. We'll hold in that position, slowly start to roll through your waistline, we'll take our knees towards the right side. Roll it back center. Roll to the other side. Now while only as far as your body feels like, yes, this is good today, be careful not to take this to a point of pain. The point of foam roller is not the constipation or the other spine. This time, take those knees towards the right side, hold it there. Can we give a little bit of a fight back and forth, we're brushing those inner thighs, what's left is running. Now hold it to that right thigh, legs together. Lift and lower that bottom knee for me, six times. Last one. Good, maybe she'll wiper it back and forth three times for me, there's no rating. And two. Good, let's hold it to the left thigh now. And we brush those inner thighs back and forth. Good, roll those legs together on that left thigh, can we lower the left leg to lift it back up? Last time. Good, bring those hips back center. Hug the right knee in close to your chest, drop the left foot to the floor. Keeping the knee bent, we push that heel down from the left thigh. Pull the right knee in enough that you feel a stretch in front of the left thigh. Three more, really big breaths here. Last two. Good, let's switch legs. Hug that left knee in. Can we plant the right heel onto the floor? Big stretch on the front of the right hip, front of the right quad. Very good, last time, we'll move both knees over the chest. Big inhale, on the exhale, use those knees as levers, compress those ribs down to the mat underneath you. Plant those feet back down. Lift the hips, take that roller out on the side. Lower your hips back down, let's try again, it's the person on our body. Once those legs are reaching away, hopefully the ribs feel like they're still heavy into your mat. Have we decreased that big space, but what's everything small of our back, has it flattened out a little bit? How are those legs doing? Are they rested now a little bit easier onto your mat? Let's round work us through a little bit more of the lower body. Grab a little of your roller. And roll onto your side. The bottom arm can rest the head up. And take that top knee above the roller. Okay, so we're lying on our side. Knees in length at the top. We'll give a little bit of a roll forward from the knees about mid thigh. And then pull it back. Give me three more, just length. And on this next one, let's roll in and find a place that's tender but tolerable. And lift the heel, the top of the back heel. Lift and tap, four more. Here's three. Last time. But as we keep that toe down, keep the tissue pushing down into the roller, try to pull that leg up and down because they're scratching an itch against that roller. Create a little bit of friction, it should warm up. Good, so now we'll reposition so that roller starts right on the middle of the thigh. And we're going to roll it up higher. We'll lean our hip width, driving all the way to the top of that thigh and then pull it back. Lean into it, we'll go all the way to the top of the thigh and then pull it back. Give me two more here. And on this next one, lean into it, find its inner spot again, that's tolerable, we'll lift and lower that. Good, drop the big toe, give me a little bit of heat here, a little bit of friction, like you're scratching an itch against that roller. Good, we'll relax that leg. Pull it back, before we switch sides. Come up to kneel on all fours. And take that roller to right in front of the knees. Now we'll lean forward so our thighs are down on the roller. Four arms go onto the mat. Let the legs hang out however they feel they want to hang out. We're going to roll from the knees to the top of the hips, now don't roll over the hip bones, there's a lot of nerve that being brought to you there, that's what we're feeling. We'll roll from the top of the body of the hips, only just very tip tops of those knees, and never rolling over the knees themselves, just the tip of that kneecap and then take it back to the front. We'll do about four more, just like this. Last two. Let's roll into the knee. Can you turn your heels in, your toes turn out, the kneecaps will be looking away from each other. Give me three rolls, the kneecap space away from each other. Two more. And of course, we'll do the opposite, so let's turn those big toes looking towards each other, the kneecaps are looking in and we'll roll from the knees to the hips. Three more. Right, you can relax back down. Take your head to the other end of the mat, so you can keep that other end of the thigh. Lying on our side, lighting that knee up to the top of the hip bone. The roller starts right at the end of the knee, we're going from the knee to about mid thigh. So we'll roll towards the mid thigh and then pull it back. Put a little bit of pressure down to that roller as we move to pull it back. Now I'm a pretty light density foam roller, if you have a thicker foam roller, meaning there's not a lot of gins, you might feel this more need to back off of the pressure. Let's find a point that is tender but tolerable, we'll hold it there. We're going to take that heel up to the sky and then tap it down to the floor. Four more. Last two. Very good, let's keep that big toe down on the floor. Scratch an itch right where it's definitely applied, we'll rub it back and forth, creating just enough friction that you start to feel a space connected to the roller peeking up. But we'll pause it, take that roller down to about the mid thigh, we're rolling from the mid thigh all the way up to the top of that thigh. Two more. Good, let's find that tolerable place again and hold it here, lift and lower that heel. Here's four. Three. Last time. Right, keep the big toe down, little bit of friction, we'll keep things up. Good, I wouldn't come off of that one here. Check out those legs for me. Can we take our legs down? Have we lost some of the tension of being held on the top of those thighs? I hope so. Hopefully those hips are feeling a little bit happier. We're going to go to the calves now, go to our calves and our peaks in this session, but stay tuned, we'll go to upper body later in the session. So take it to a state of precision, of course. I want to start with my right foot on the roller, my left foot out to the side. I'm just pointing to see that. So my left foot's on the floor, my right calf is on the roller. Put your hands behind, if you need to, you put a fist, you put your elbow on that, go on with your elbows if needed. I mean, use my foot to the top of the floor, like this, and pull from my calf, so the back of the knee, all the way down that ankle. And if you were one of the few lovely ones that this is not a style that you need to add more attention, both calves at the same time. Or even cross the leg over, that's pretty intense. Just be aware. We don't want to bruise the calf. So on this next one, try to feel that the toe turned out to the outside of the calf a little bit. Two more. Last one. And of course, we'll do the opposite. So let's turn the big toe in. We're rolling inside the calf. Notice my knee is soft. So I'm not making it too straight, that way that calf wants to pretty relax. If you find a spot that has quite a bit of tension, just give it a little bit of extra time, taking smaller rolls. No more than 30 seconds. If it still tends at that point, we either hit them another day. Good, we can relax that leg, let's switch to the other side. So I pull my roller out. My left calf can be on to the floor, my right foot on the floor to assist me in the next. But I'll roll from the knee, all the way down to that ankle. Two more. But let's turn that big toe out, the knees turned out to the outside of the calf. One more. Now we'll turn the knee in this time, I get my knees stay soft. We're going to roll all the way up to the knee and back. Three more. Last time. Good, now once we're back. Take that roller legwise from standing forward. So we'll start by rolling out the left foot, the right foot needs to stay flat on the floor. And take the left foot onto the roller, the arch is right on top. You should bend that left knee, try to put your weight down into the arch as much as feels good and safe on your heels. And then press it back up. So do three more times, push the arch, big old back roll. And then release. Last two. And one. Good, so now let's pull it back, we'll roll with it up very too close, we're going to try to bite on the foot. And we'll pull it a little, a little bit to the left. Pull it back up. And then the heel. One more. All right, so now apply some pressure down to that roller underneath that left foot, getting little rolls back and forth, really working from where the heel meets the arch to where the ball of the foot reaches the arch of the foot. Creating a little bit of friction there, hopefully keeping up, feeling more blood flows through those elbows. There should be a little bit of work on your body. And then we'll hold it steady, that's the press down. And then we'll hold it steady, that's the press down to the arch. We roll our weight towards the pinky toe, lifting the big toe. And then roll it back, through the pinky toe. Do three more times. Last two. One more. Good, drop that left foot back to the floor. And notice if you can just feel a difference between the two feet. Hopefully the arch of the left foot feels like it is more grounded. It has more area, more surface area down into the floor. Now I'm gonna switch to the right foot instead. So left foot can see if it's grounded. Right foot comes on the roller. Let's start out, ease toward it, push to the arch, down into the floor. And then release. Press down, we feel that stretch on the calf. And take it back. Two more. So we can relieve the press from the roller. Roll back, we're seeing it, onto the arch of the foot, really spreading those toes out onto the roller. Roll it back and go all the way to the heel. We'll pull the roller in, going all the way up towards the toe. To roll the roller away and find the heel. Two more. Last one. And we'll find our arch press into that roller again. Little rolls back and forth. Trying to find that place where the heel meets the arch. All the way where the ball meets the arch. Again, they should feel that right claw or it's just a burn. All right, let's hold our press, steadying the leg. Roll the foot to the pinky toe, finding those lifts on the big toe. We'll press back and forward. Find the lift on the pinky toe. So we roll the pinky toe, showing the bottom of our foot out towards the opposite end of the world. To roll it back the other way. Last time. And we'll plant that foot back on the floor. Hopefully both feet have now melted into the floor and you feel a little bit better grounded in your work. You've made it today. I hope you join me for episode two of our foam roller session coming soon.